On single-family and multifamily residential properties, every wise-related sections and definitions to reflect the amendment. Yes, so this, just to give you an update really quick, um, in respect of, and be respectful of your time. So this item was presented to the PNC on May sixteen twenty twenty-two, and the PNC recommended unanimous approval and add the following recommendations and concerns. So to increase the height uh for carports to allow for high-profile trucks and proper roof fill. And then they had a question as far as will there be any criteria on the construction of carports? And then what can be done regarding metal or fabric shades used as carports? And we can address these as the presentation goes along. And then on June fourteenth twenty twenty-two, Ms. Garcia presented the first reading of the draft proposed amendments, um, reviewed by the PNC on May sixteen. And then staff presented the commission with a clean draft that addressed the recommendations and concerns on June twentieth, and implementing legal advice on the amendments. And then this item includes the recommendations again by the PNC. And then several changes that we made as we went along, um, several changes like some stuff that was repetitive, things like that that we changed. Um, so the items are revised and have a symbol in the front to to uh note that those are changes, like last-minute changes that we did. And like I said, it was just mostly like minor stuff, like uh stuff that was repetitive on the amendments to 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 summarize it and simplify it. So having said that, um, what are yard setbacks? So prior to presenting to the council with the proposed amendments, I wanted to kind of unpack the subject of setbacks and briefly um review with the council what setbacks are, what setbacks are and the importance of having setbacks. And the impetus of this proposed amendment is in no way intended to minimize the importance of setbacks or alter the purpose or value of setbacks. So staff's main intent therefore is to provide some flexibility and relief to property owners while ensuring privacy and safety concerns are at the forefront. And then having said that, uh, so what are setbacks? Um, just simply the the minimum open space required around any building or structure. And then generally, um, it's maintained between buildings and the boundary or the property, um, line. And then they're necessary to ensure that the structure has distance from roads, water bodies, or other buildings. And typically, they're typically at the front, rear, and side of buildings. And then some of the origins, uh, specifically the New York's uh State Tenement Housing Act of nineteen oh one was a catalyst to start building codes and also density and dimensional standards for safety. Because a lot of accidents and deaths related to to how crammed, uh, units were back then. So the importance of of setbacks, just really quick, to ensure buildings receive adequate natural light, to ensure sufficient ventilation, to protect entities such as water bodies located close to buildings from being adversely affected by the constr- uh, construction and human habitation. And then to protect one building from the shadow of another, which would otherwise obstruct adequate provisions of ventilation and sunlight, to protect buildings from noise-causing elements such as nearby industries, airports, or highways. And finally, most importantly, to ensure easy and safe access to buildings. And then setback regulations typically depend on the following factors: the size of the property, whether it is on one side or mult- multi-site open lot, locality or neighborhood where the lot is located, and then width of the road and which the lot, which the lot is located, and then the maximum primitive coverage area and the locality. Which brings us to the need for concessions and flexibility. So based on research conducted and best planning practices, uh, from the American Planning Association on carports and the existing conditions within the town of Horizon City, these are some of the concerns that brought about the recommended amendments. In the following proposed amendments, original text is in black, and then in red or struck out is the new language that we're proposing. So first off, um, typically when applicants would come in to try to do a variance because of a carport, it was difficulty in justifying a hardship or or some special circumstance to have the carport. So to my knowledge, there's only been like maybe one carport that was allowed, uh, due to like a very special circumstance, or it was severely disabled. So that is the only one that I know that was approved. Other than that, there there hasn't been any approvals as far as, um, carports on the sides or at the front. So those that are existing are typically, uh, non-conforming. Um, so then non-conforming carports continue to be built, like I said, uh, due partly due to their lack of flexibility. And then, um, I did research over five different Texas cities, um, and most of them had a minimum of two to three feet on the side, um, for unenclosed carports. And then no other accessory structure, um, would be allowed, so long as they have a masonry wall, fire-rated, or a metal structure. Uh, those cities that I researched were primarily El Paso, Dallas, Plano, Copel, and Fort Worth, and they typically had a two-to-three-foot side setback. I also looked at California and New Orleans, and they typically by right have a three-foot side setback, um. And then I did some research in, again, in planning, uh, best practices in the EPA, and then, you know, this is very typical of that. Um, research also showed that carports were generally allowed up to the front property line, subject to easements and site visibility. And then the city of El Paso currently allows carports on side setbacks by right on homes built on or before August nineteen seventy-nine with a five-foot, uh, masonry wall. On average, garage is typically used as storage, as everybody knows, or are too small to accommodate a full-size, uh, car or truck. Um, and then also extreme weather tends to take a toll on 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 vehicles' heat. Uh, home builders have begun to build also side, uh, access homes, uh, so there is possibly necessitating, uh, some side setback relief for carports as well or shaded area. And then proper design and construction of single-family dwellings and multifamily units can also be a good way to ensure that yard setbacks are maintained while allowing some flexibility as well. So the proposed amendments are as follows, starting with section two oh two, general definitions, um. They address the issue of prefabricated structures by clarifying carport and canopy definitions and not allowing them to be interchanged. So, um, as far as an accessory structure, we we, uh, revise that to specifically say that they are detached, uh, from the main structure and incidental to. And then as far as an awning, we also did, uh, revise the definition of awning, uh, uh, added the definition of canopy, and then also, um, uh, revised the definition of carport and garage. So for canopy, we said it has to be a roofed accessory structure constructed or prefabricated, manufactured elsewhere for assembly of fabric, um, made out of metal or other material. Um, and then for a carport, we said have to have a solid roof, is open on a minimum of three sides for the purpose of storing and sheltering motor vehicles. So specifically, we said that it has to be open on three sides for safety, uh, concerns. And then the garage, we we defined it so it wouldn't be used as like a carport to say that it's a fully enclosed, um, motor motor vehicle shelter. And then that's primarily how we're addressing that question by the PNC as far as what do you do about the metal carports or the fabric ones that they had like many concerns about? For example, on the metal ones, they're saying that, but typically, one of the PNC commissioners, uh, is a contractor, and he was saying that those are very unsafe because they typically don't stay put. Uh, they'll try to bolt them down or whatever, but most of the times they they won't stay, you know, stay put. So they're kind of concerned, and also they they look pretty pretty bad aesthetically, they don't look too great. Um, which brings us to a challenge that we have is that the, uh, Texas Local Government Code, chapter three hundred, recently put in a a new, uh, requirement, and says that we cannot restrict the construction material or the archi- architectural standards for for these structures. So since we can't do that, the only way around that is to say that, uh, we defined or we cat- categorized canopies and carports very specifically for that reason. And then moving on, uh, to section eight oh seven point one general, uh, what we did here is for residential accessory structures, we also ensured that detached carport uh, was included in here to ensure that we're not co- confusing what a carport or a canopy is, and then specifying that accessory structures do need to be detached, okay? And then on number two, we added that the exception as far as for side or side street, uh, yard allowing a carport, uh, but specifically, um, complying with sections eight twelve point three and eight twelve point four that are coming up, uh, that address those. So eight point twelve point two in the front yard, uh, was saying that a carport would be allowed over a twenty-four-foot wide maximum driveway, that's the typical. But there are exceptions for thirty-foot wide maximum driveway when committed under section three point zero six one eight eight, um. So what we did is we put a maximum of four hundred and fifty square feet, which is the fifteen times the thirty, which is a maximum of four hundred and fifty square feet. They're saying that you can't overbuild a, um, carport and then try to increase the size of the driveway, because a typical driveway, again, is only twenty-four foot or thirty feet that it's allowed through the section here. And then we're also saying that the carport shall not exceed the height of fifteen feet, and that's based on, again, research that we did, which is typically twelve to fifteen feet. We started with twelve feet, but the PNC, um, kind of asked us to move it up to fifteen feet. But that's the typical that we saw up through our research as far as fifteen feet being the highest. Uh, above fifteen feet is is a little is a little, uh, too much to be thought of. And then, uh, the the carport does include whatever overhang it has, so it's fifteen feet to max. Uh, in other words, you can go fifteen feet and then try to add overhang or anything like that, it's it's maximum. And I'll show you a little, uh, a typical of that. We also changed section, uh, subsection, uh, E to F because we added that new language in section E, so E section is a brand-new, uh, section. Then we go to section eight twelve point three, side and rear yard setbacks. It's typically kind of like the same as as the, uh, the other one. But in this one, we're saying that, um, the carport has to be at least nine feet wide, measured to the edge of the roof line, and then located on the side and side street yard. We went nine feet only because that's the typical of a parking, and it's it'd be pretty tough to try to put a full carport, uh, like the width of a driveway on the side. So it's really more for properties that have a little more, uh, flexibility to have it. And they still need to maintain the five-foot, uh, setback requirement. And I forgot to mention that you can only have one carport. It's if you choose the side or the front, that's your max amount of one and one, not not one on each side or if that makes sense. Um. And then we have eight twelve point four side street yard. It's, again, this is pretty similar to the other one. It's the fifteen-foot, uh, uh, high and then nine feet wide on the side. And then you can't exceed the the, uh, the primary structure as far as the the length of the, uh, of the of the carport. So this is a typical, just to kind of like, uh, illustrate what we're talking about. You have to maintain, um, all the setbacks, of course, and then did, uh, let me show you. So the the front carport is illustrated here, as you can see those little squares would be kind of like the columns. And then that little portion there would be the overhang. So you're ca- we're counting the whole thing, including the overhang at fifteen feet. And then you would have to keep the or maintain the side setbacks and the rear setback, uh, whatever it is. And then at least a five-foot setback is what we're proposing. So on a typical twenty-foot, uh, setback, uh, you would have to leave at least five feet in it, okay? And then, um, this is like a typical of what a a a side, uh, carport attached or detached or detached would look like. You're looking at a at a fifteen-foot, uh, high as a maximum, and then a five-foot setback on the side. Same thing with the attached, uh, carport, the fifteen-foot and the five-foot, uh, setback. These are some examples of carports over a driveway and the front yard setback. However, none of these examples are in the city of Horizon because they're currently, they're not, they're not permitted. So we we took them from other cities. And as you can see, the majority of them are well-built, and, um, some of them do look similar to the, uh, to the main structure. But again, on our amendment, we're saying that we encourage folks to do it, to make it look like the home, but we can't, um, require it based on that, uh, Texas local government code requirement of of not, uh, not being able to impose requirements on construction material, uh, or architectural, uh, standards. So like, like you, that this is what typically would look like, with a five-foot setback in the front and at fifteen, uh, foot high. And then typically, like I said, a twenty-four-foot driveway, that's the max. Or if you're a lot of thirty-foot, it would be a maximum of four hundred and fifty square feet with a five-foot setback. Uh, these are some examples of the side, uh, uh, setback carports. Again, they would have to be a fifteen-feet-high maximum and, um, a five-foot setback on the side. And then the carport could not extend further than the, um, primary structure as far as the length of it. And again, these are examples from outside of the city of Horizon. Uh, with that, to summarize, staff request that city council consider a positive action in order to provide some flexibility and relief in the allowance of carports by permitting them to be in the front setback and side and side street yards, provided that all required setbacks are met. And that concludes my presentation. Are there any questions from the council?
Does the, does anyone from the public want to address this, uh, this item? Okay. Uh, no one from the public wants to, uh, address, I'll, uh, end the public, uh, portion and, uh, introduce the, uh.
Number thirteen is the discussion and action portion of the same item, extreme discussion.
Okay, now.
Have a question, sir.
Yes, sir.
On the, um, canopy and carport. On a home that has a double garage. The fifteen-foot height and with a five-foot setback on the sidewalk, correct?
Five foot, yes, sir, minimum is five foot setback up to the.
The edge of the, uh, carport. I'll use my home as an example.
Yeah.
I have a two-part garage, you're going up. On the side of my house, bought it forty years ago, well, it's more than forty years, I bought it twenty-five years ago. As you come up, it has a driveway that goes to the back and it's all concrete. I guess from a motorhome that they had in the past or something, you know?
Okay.
So I'll be limited to just say I wanna put a carport, but say I wanna put a carport for another vehicle I have on the side.
On the side.
But I'll be limited to only one, either the side or.
The front.
So we'll be telling homeowners who pay taxes, how many they can do, how much they can do with it.
And it's only nine feet wide.
Out of our numbers discussing that portion, I I don't remember that, in the last meeting?
There's a lot of homes I have, uh.
Regarding the limit.
Yes, I I I, it was in the in the backup, in the presentation. Uh, we limit accessory structures in the rear yard, that's part of zoning. You wanna, you want to mitigate the number of overbuilt lots that creates fire hazards, it creates limitations to emergency access to the structures. So that is the purpose of limiting the number of these structures on the property.
Anything could be, you know.
How would a, how would a carport, there will be a limit of emergency access, though, like how would like one be in the front and one be on the side, limit that type of?
Well, now you have a roof structure encroaching or further into a side yard. If, uh, if fire needs to get back there with ladders, whatever, what every, whatever kind of equipment, if vehicles are parked there, that could restrict access to the rear yard.
They can get through the, they have aerial, they have ladder companies.
So again, we, especially in Horizon, we have very large lot requirements. For that very reason from, based on our discussions here. Um, council has expressed a concern with having houses built too close to each other. By allowing these structures to be built in your side yards or in your front yards, you're allowing those structures to get closer and closer to each other.
I mean, I'm just saying, because I mean, I know they're all over the city of El Paso, and there's forty, thirty-seven fire departments, and they have all types of equipment that can get through anything. That's why they have ladder companies and buckets, what do you call buckets, aerials. So then, and to bring a whole line in on a three-sided opening carport, they do it every day. And that's a lot, whether it's the carport and the side.
You might already went through it, how's the setbacks?
Sure.
The circles and the red.
All the examples, the, yes, sir. Oh, yeah. I think the.
That's all right, cool.
Sorry.
So, so yes, uh, that was a concern of ours, that we didn't want the lots I was saying are too small because then it's going to start up. But my, my yard is wide, right? I I do have that armpit parking on the right side that I saw the house like that. Um, but I wanna be able to use that if I, if I have it available, you know what I mean? Where nine foot beside my house, if I if I'm limited to nine feet, I still have another twelve feet on the side of the house, you know what I mean?
Well, in and in certain cases, I mean, if you have a wide enough side yard that you can go larger than nine feet or wider than nine feet,
Yeah.
then you can do it.
But that's not the meaning here, though, that says I'm actually.
That that's a minimum of nine feet.
Oh, I thought, I'm sorry, I thought it was.
To be in the side yard, it has to be a minimum of nine feet wide.
No, I get it, I get it.
No difference to be considered a carport, but you still have to maintain your required side setback.
But you'd only be able to have it there on the side and not on the front, right?
You just can't encroach on the, on the back.
You just pick, pick one or the other.
Right.
Which which I also wanna have a problem with on the side setback. And it's just me, you know, I mean, as long as it's fire-rated.
Yes.
As long as it's fire-rated, we might not be able to use that side. And I understand, I'm I'm not gonna be the, I'm probably not the.
The majority.
You know, the majority here. But that that's just the way I I see it, as long as it's fire-rated, um, if it's metal, you know, then I I don't see a problem with going to.
But that's where we cannot regulate, say, metal.
What, fire-rated?
But we cannot, we, cities cannot regulate the materials that are used, that's the concern. So if someone wants to put something else that isn't necessarily as, um, well-fire rated, I guess, as metal, then we have, we don't have a say in that. So yes, in that case, if we could say only metal structures, then we wouldn't have an issue with that. But because we cannot limit the materials.
The fabrics on the canopies as well as the fire rate as well.
Because we can't limit the materials, that's our concern.
That is true.
Now, the conversation that you had concerning the setbacks in the backyard. I had asked, are we still able to use that higher space as long as it was from the back line of the house back?
I don't recall the the question.
And I believe, well, uh, my question was, do building, uh, per, building, uh, something in the backyard could be be to the property line? And that was my question.
In the rear yard?
In the rear yard.
Yes, if it's fire-rated, that's right. But any, any portion of a structure that is within five feet of the leak? Yes, needs to be fire-rated.
But it's fire-rated.
But you're in a rear yard where you don't have another main structure next to the wall. You have more, typically, you have more.
And I'm just asking for clarification, that's all I'm asking.
Yes, but even in the rear yard, you're limited to a certain amount of square footage of accessory structures. You cannot exceed, you cannot overbuild your rear yard with tons of structures.
So you can have a structure in the backyard. And a carport, whether it's on the side or on the front, but you can only pick one, one of them, correct? You can't have the carport on both front yard and your side yard. I thought I'm gonna say that, correct? Because we're limiting the access to retired and services, but if you have a gate on your side yard, though, gates or raw walls, that would not be any type of limitation that we would be setting. I guess I'm just trying to understand the meaning behind it.
But it's not another structure, and you're also protecting, as Art mentioned, that what you're, what the purpose of setbacks are. You're protecting the other property as well from, you know, ensuring that they have proper ventilation and access and all of that as well. Because if each property were to build the same structure, then we're just getting those structures closer and closer to each other.
I believe what she's, I believe what she's trying to say is fire safety is not the only reason that we are adding restrictions. Part of the restrictions are to keep structures from being so close together.
You also have, uh, need to stretch it, that's great.
Uh, for all kinds of reasons, uh, but I believe that the fire issue is, uh, the fire safety issue is not the only issue, they take into account.
And to the, to the council, we also vetted this item to fire. And fire's concerns was that, um, you know, if we put some limits, we could avoid some of the issues such as, well, using it for something else like storage and having a lot of storage as opposed to, uh, sheltering a vehicle and then impeding the accessibility. That's one of their main concerns. The other one was like the larger vehicles, like RVs, which is one foot the height limitation, because they had concerns over big vehicles like that, um, like if there was a fire or whatever the case may be, having issues with that. Which is why we we, uh, put some limitations as far as the number of carports that you can have and then, uh, maintaining the setbacks, those are their concerns.
Yeah, um. But and, uh, we don't wanna homogenize homes, that they all look the same, but we don't want you know, just carports everywhere in there with no, you know, because some, some look unsightly, you know? And that's what I I I don't want, you know? They, that they have. I I like the idea of, you know, the, similar to the house, the 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 material, similar to the main structure. I like that idea, but I guess we can't regulate that.
Right.
Only for the.
Correct.
I think, oh, would you like to say that this issue has been very thoroughly vetted with our private zoning commission? And we cannot, and this is their recommendation. I think we, we just need to consider that when we bring this thing up, is the people that we have asked to serve and to represent us on the private zoning commission have wrestled with this issue for several, several, uh, sessions now. And before we reject their work, we should consider what they've done carefully. I understand that we all have our, we all have our, uh, opinions and everything else, but a group of people that we selected have vetted this very issue very seriously. And this is their recommendation. Uh, and that's what I.
Thank you, Moira, and I'd love to say, and thank you for reminding us about that.
I just have another question, is like on the parks that we're building and, um, accessing and everything for public knowledge, on the canopies up there, there are going to be some shaded canopies, that's okay?
Right, they're just diff- you just can't use a canopy as a carport, that's what we classified it.
But the canopies can't be used out in in the parks for shade and stuff like that? I mean, that's not gonna be broad enough, because this is just addressing.
I'm sorry, are you talking about public?
The fiber canopies or the steel, uh, beams?
And and.
That are used for shading, that's gonna be okay for the parks and stuff like that, I mean?
Yes. And and homeowners can put them on their yards as well, but they are restricted to the rear yard. They can also put them in the side yard if they need the setbacks. Those are considered accessory structures. And those are limited to the rear and side, side yards.
And are they limited on the number of canopies, I'm just curious?
It depends on the square footage. So, um, I believe when I first started ten years ago, we limited the the square footage of accessory structures to no more than four hundred and fifty square feet. We since amended that to allow it to go up to a fifty percent of the square footage of the house or forty percent of the rear yard, whichever is more restricted. So you have a really large rear yard or a really large home, you could essentially have several accessory structures to include canopies up to that square footage.
And and to the council, I also wanted to remind you all that you're going from not allowing them to bringing them in. So that's why we wrestled with it, and we thought there has to be some limits to that, otherwise you have that situation where you're overbuilding when you have, you know, too, too, too many.
What, what happens to the structures that are already?
In the exact.
That becomes, it's a code enforcement issue. And the, the, the other obstacle that we have to deal with is that we don't have a court of record. So all that Judge Gonzalez can do is impose fines until they eventually take them down. They're not grand, they won't be grandfathered in because they weren't allowed. So code will will need to cite these illegal structures, the owners of the illegal structures, and have them go through the court system. Once you have a court of record, then a judge can require that the structure be.
Right, and, and to the council in the same respect, we can work with them as well to try to bring them into conformance if, should this be approved to, to this, uh, to these standards.
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Are we gonna be doing that with all structures on the property or just carports? Because I don't think that's right.
You know.
That applies to all. In my opinion, I think that is not right, that we're just gonna be signaling out homeowners that have carports.
No.
Um, I sat on the board of adjustments and I know for a fact we put more than one carport or, or variances, so it wasn't just one, I, I, I sat on that board.
I, I, I believe the difference here is we, they have a variance, it's a legal structure.
So. Right, but are we gonna be doing that with everybody, every structure?
I believe, I believe that, that the purpose of the code enforcement group is to enforce our code regardless of what it is.
You're right, but if it hasn't been done up until now, that's not my concern.
Well, maybe, then maybe that's something else that we should get, we should address, if we're going to have a rule, we should follow it.
Correct.
And therefore we should maybe consider codes to, to begin to enforce our code.
Yes, sir.
But I don't believe that we are signaling out anyone, if there is a code issue, we should have got, addressed it.
It should have been addressed, I think that we're just now getting to it, I don't think.
So shame on us.
I don't, I don't think that's reasonable.
Shame on us, absolutely, shame on us for not, for not doing that.
Alright, but, but, but does that, but does that relieve us of the responsi, does that relieve us of our responsibility?
Also, homeowners.
To enforce the, the regulations that this body has for.
No, sure, it does not.
It does not.
And, and that's the.
No.
And ultimately it comes down to this body to decide that and make those, those decisions on how that should be run, so.
It's not.
Decisions. My. I understand that the recommendation came from PNC. And not to take any hard work away from them, any hard work away from anybody, because I know this is a tough subject. But I have to take everything with a grain of salt as well, because PNC also recommended that we were gonna limit the color, colors on each buildings as well. I didn't like that recommendation either. I don't know that I'd like. I, I don't like all of it. I, I am not ready to, to agree to this yet. Cause I still have, there's a lot of other questions that I, I need to go through this and I wanna make sure that this is something, because I am. I am representing a lot of people and a lot of people in my area have come and talked to me about this. So I would like for them to digest this and take a look at this and make sure that this is something that they're okay with. Because I, I, as much as I like or dislike it, I am here because they elected me to be here. So I need to make sure that they're okay with this. So I, if I can hold off one month, I would like to take this to them and talk to them and if they have any questions, because I guarantee you, there are not a lot of people that have looked at this. Uh, because this was sent to us, uh, I don't know what my email is.
This is the second reading.
Well, I know it's the second reading, but they didn't have this on there.
It's a sec, it's an items.
This is the first time that we have seen the changes.
The changes are minimal from last time.
But then there's still changes that happen.
We added designs to town at the east to a definition, and that was really it.
Absolutely, and I understand.
And we presented council with the PowerPoint right after the first reading.
If, if, if they are fine with it, that I'm gonna put this out, you know, to, um, you know, when, when I get ahold of, you know, people in the community. I'm gonna put this before them and say, you need to go to this website, you need to check this out, is this something you need? I need the feedback before I can say, yeah, you do. And that's just, that's just me, and I know I'm not the majority here, but that's where I'm coming from. So if next month we can revisit this.
That's an action item.
You know, I would like to revisit this and, and, and at that time, if nobody has any issues, if there's not any other questions that come up, then we'll go ahead and work with this, I don't have a problem. But right now, I can't do that because I know that there hasn't been a lot of bias involved, is it was sent out June twentieth, I'm sorry, is that correct?
It was right after the, the first reading, the two meetings, so June twelfth, I believe.
So I, and that's just where I'm coming from, so, I mean, we can take the vote on it, but I can tell you that I'm not ready to.
A motion?
To do that.
Is there, is there a motion?
I would motion to table this for one month.
Is there any legal issue to go ahead?
You can table one.
No.
Okay, there's a motion to.
I guess there's, any, is there a second?
I'm.
There was a second.
Term.
Terms, we have a second, so that, so we got a ball discussion.
There's a motion and a second to table this till the next council meeting.
To vote on that.
Okay. If there are no further questions, uh, let's pull the council.
Miller?
Alright.
Hi. Gil?
Hi.
Worthen? And Dave?
Hi.
Do you know?
Hi.
Adia?
I didn't have a chance to comment, so. But, uh, I'm gonna take it with the same, so, but, uh, we can wait for, uh, a few more weeks.
For, for happy, hi.
Motion period, this motion, this, uh, discussion act, I have this table for.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
Mayor, before we adjourn, and I don't know, we need to reopen the items, I wanted to ask council, there were any suggestions that you all have now?
One last question.
Please have to reopen the item. And, and before we move on, I wanted to ask council, there are any suggestions that you all have now that we can investigate before the next meeting so that we can be prepared for that?
I don't, I, as of right now, I don't, but I can get back to you.
We'll get back to you.
Yeah. Thank you.
We'll get back, thank you, the board.
There is no further items, only attend to, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
To adjourn.
This meeting of the chair, thank you.
Yeah, so that's why I, I, that's why I like the, that's why I like this language.
Hate them, I'm a bad uncle. That's all good, it's good, my email, it's weird, I keep getting them on my phone. No, no, I, I personally. I can't remember.
It was in your faces to go.
It's a fabric, it's not cheese, it's expensive.
Well, again, that's. That's a question.
I mean, yeah, I'm just saying. But anyway.
It's like, I put it in there, it just makes things longer for me now, you know? Obviously, I think it's amazing, but I'm like, you know, uh, that's my business, but. I, I can imagine, I can imagine, I really can, and, and going, but it gets to that, so, but you did a great thing, I love. The location that we presented with the rendering, this is not a weapon, I, I just, I just. I just asked that you all, you all, lots of the work, and, and those, what we need to, so you have a good life, you need to, like, what is, what is, what?
Sir, I forgot your name. I forgot your name, soon.
Hossway?
Oh, I'm sorry, Hossway? Good seeing you. Has the city of Horizon ever considered, uh, starting a YouTube channel?
I don't know.
Oh, okay.
We do Facebook, so.
Yeah, I know, I know. I was just gonna suggest, uh, Socorro has a fa, uh, YouTube channel. And, uh, just, just another outlet.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yep.
Well, everything is better tenured, it's fire rated, that's gonna come with fees, so, so they can have more of a. I know, I'm just saying, people want to come, but they, they have comments, I don't know, you can't speak to them.
Well, and that's the thing, we're here for this, and we don't have to.
Yeah. They're working on another thing to handle. Thank you.
But this, you have to, well, you have to start a dream, and so it's, uh, it's like.
I bet he got a variance, cause he's on that, behind him as well, that.
That means, that means.
You don't have to walk, or you run. Well, how do you get that?
And, and that's, that's what we're trying to call it, is cause people just feel that they don't.
You all get pretty much. Like your input. Well, glad you had it. Do you have any suggestions? I don't have one.
And she's a, the, uh.
You know what, probably just very great, cause they, you know, they have their event, so it's helpful there.
Yes, and then, uh, she was placed in charge of, uh.
I'm sorry? Are you all?
She's still there, uh, I think they're moving her to become a vice president.
Good, yeah, well, it's not, but it's like, you know, they're mature. Exactly. Well, I'm gonna try to make sure that this is fair, that's, that's my goal.
Yeah. We'll, we'll look at that.
Huh? And that's still, alright, so what's gonna happen with that? Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Bye, bye, good to see you.
See ya.
I'll see you. Thank you. Alright, I'll see you. Have a good night.
Alright, good to.
Thank you.
Thanks. Evening, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening.
I know a couple of years ago, we had a conversation we probably forgot about, but, uh, I was curious if the city council has ever had any more discussions? Or ever had a discussion about, uh, uh, the possibility of a post office being built in town?
That, that has, we, um, you know, that's out of our, um, out of our hands, but, uh.
Right.
We are, we would like to have something like that, but there's nothing.
Yeah. I, I, I know it's out of your, your power or your control, but I'm in.
Yeah, yeah. But I really would like, we're, we're gonna rebuild over here, a new, uh, on the side, uh, new, uh, uh, city hall.
Right.
Hopefully that one will be integrated in there.
Okay.
But, uh, I know council members want like that, and it's been discussed, so, but nothing officially.
I, I think I should have chose my words, but I think what I, what I was basically getting at is, um, or suggesting is, is if, in the future, if you guys, uh, would consider, uh, discussing with Congresswoman Escobar. Or whoever's in that type of position of power, cause the federal government, obviously, yeah.
Yeah, that, that, that's, uh, that's not, uh, out of an absurdity, or that, that's a reasonable, uh, request.
I mean, I'm being selfish, cause I use the post office a lot myself, but I just, I, I can't believe there's no post office in Horizon City as big as we are.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, and we're getting bigger.
Right.
That, that might be the, the, the springboard for that.
Right.
So we'll, we'll look into that.
Okay, I don't wanna take your time, and, uh, thanks for all your service, yep.
No, sir.
Oh, you work for the city?
Yes.
Gave it to three daughters, so we brought up the two daughters and we fixed the house. But the houses are uh, they're uh they're. And so, wow.
Wish that house.
Uh, yeah, my taxes over there are for twenty five, they're supposed to be, or ninety five dollars.
Ninety five dollars?
Yes. Versus uh, I have a half a house here and I pay almost four thousand. So, so that's that's worth it.
Four thousand?
Yeah.
Increase?
Yeah.
Where's your car?
Uh, right over there, the little one? Oh, I find that. Yeah, I guess so.
Excuse me, so you're a city council member?
Yes, uh-huh.
I'm sorry, uh, what was your name, sir?
Uh, Rafael Padilla.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I was just trying to get everybody's name.
Oh, it's nice to see you at the meetings.
Oh, thank you.
Cause we hardly get uh a lot of participation from the public.
Yeah, that's why uh, that's one of the main reasons I started my YouTube channel and I put these videos up there.
Okay, we're also on Facebook.
Yes, but uh, and I do check out Facebook, but uh in my opinion, YouTube, there's a lot more eyes on YouTube.
Exactly, yeah, the uh city of Socorro and the city of Passau use YouTube too.
Yeah, that's what I was uh telling um uh, not Jesus, but what's his name, um, the technical guy?
Yes, uh-huh, yeah, I know which one.
Josue?
Josue, yeah, I was telling Josue, I'm like, you know, it's not that hard, or I mean, I'm not telling him how to do his job, but I was like, you know, I was suggesting that he should start a YouTube channel for the for the city, yeah.
Good night.
Have a good night. Uh, what was your name, ma'am?
Michelle.
Oh, what do you do for the city?
The planning director.
Oh, okay. Oh, yeah, I recognize your voice. It's the mask, I didn't recognize the face. Oh, have a good night, guys.